As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the May 27th, 2021 City Council Work Session to Order. On May 6, 2021, I received a request from Councilor Dole to participate remotely in the May 27th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary disability medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to the Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda Number Three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Councilor Dole to remotely participate in the May 27th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary disability or medical condition.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Mead. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Councilor Dole, will you please state where you are located?
1003 East Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Thank you. Could everyone on the City Council and in the audience hear Councilor Dole?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Councilor Dole. All right, the next item on the agenda, well, I just wanted to mention that we had our annual trip to Betsy Bell Mountain. That's always a treat. It was a beautiful day, and it was a clear day, so you could see for miles and miles. Also, I wanted to mention that masks are now optional in City Hall. If you would care to wear your mask, please feel free. But if you've been vaccinated and you would rather not wear your mask, that's fine, too. We just ask that if you have not been vaccinated, to please wear your mask. We still offer the hand sanitizing stations outside of the chambers as well as sanitizing wipes at the podium. In addition, I would ask the City Council members, if you would like to be recognized to make comments or to ask questions, please recognize the mayor, and the mayor will recognize you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented with, yeah, as presented, may I just ask presented?
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice, Councilor Claffey.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Councilor Claffey. Any additional comments? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item number three, a presentation by Mary Baldwin University. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to welcome to council chambers this evening Liesl Crozier, the Associate Vice President of External Affairs, and President Pamela Fox, both of Mary Baldwin University. And we're pleased to have them here with us this evening to provide to us an update on activities at Mary Baldwin over the course of the last year. And with that, I would invite President Fox to the podium to make the presentation.
Welcome. Thank you so much for welcoming me and Liesl and the Mary Baldwin family, Mayor Oaks, honorable members of the City Council, and city managers. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. Just get queued up here a little bit. Let's just check the, check the arrow functions. Okay, well, good, thank you. Well, it is great to be here. I guess it's a gross understatement to say that a lot has happened in the world and at Mary Baldwin University since I was here last year to give you an update. We were so fortunate to have Mayor Oaks join us for our fall opening at the State of the University this, in August of 2020, but that seems really like a world ago now, given everything that's happened. But I wanted to call attention to the fact sheet that has been distributed to you. We won't dwell on those things this evening, but it gives you a little bit of sense of update on our enrollment and some figures on our economic impact, so we're pleased to leave that with you. But we'd like to highlight a couple of things in particular tonight. And first of all, how Mary Baldwin University has continued to function for the health and safety of our own community and this community over the past 14 months, as well as efforts on our campus and within our community during this period of social unrest through our Coalition for Racial and Social Justice. So we'll have a brief overview here, starting with what really was a remarkable year. So two weekends ago, we had in-person joyous commencement ceremonies. We had to have four of them to accommodate the distancing requirements at the time, but I think the joy of everybody being together, this is a Doctor of Physical Therapy student receiving her hood and her diploma from her advisors in the Murphy Deming College of Health Science. So I think that gives you some sense of what it was like for the families. And so we did also have a ceremony so that last year's class, the baccalaureate class and all the graduates of 2020, who had a virtual commencement ceremony, but who did not have the opportunity to come back to their beloved hills, we had a special ceremony for them as well. So overall of that, it was great to celebrate. It was an extraordinary year. We had only 142 total COVID cases among our 1,800 residential students, faculty, and staff. And through all of that period, everything continued for learning through virtual environment in a hybrid format. Student clubs met, our student athletes competed, even in their varsity athletics through the USA South Conference that began in January with a crunched-up time for all of them playing their fall and spring sports at once. One of the major obstacles that had to be overcome was the continuance of clinical, medical, medical rotations for all of our final-year students. Many of them were dispersed, as you can imagine, into COVID-stressed hospitals throughout the United States, but they did manage to complete their work on time and graduate. So while it may have seemed quiet on the Hill over these past 14 months, we want you to know it was humming. With the activity of the present and through the resilience and resourcefulness of the community, we had a very remarkable year. Part of this, of course, was staying connected safely. Almost everything at Mary Baldwin, like everywhere else, looked different this year, but we used a lot of outside spaces, and we had distancing within classrooms and hybrid options. We daily did attempt to stay safe and make everything work, and you can see some of those facts here. We shifted to online learning when we shut the university down last March in 10 days, and that continued, and all the courses were really brought up to speed in a fully online way by the fall. We had a pandemic leadership team whose work is nothing short of heroic. Dr. Deborah Grubel, who is the Vice President of the Murphy Deming College of Health Sciences, became our Chief Health Officer, and they together kept our entire community safe. And it was a period, as you can imagine, of really intense planning and frequent communication as evolving issues came up, and Liesl and the whole team were off, were keeping our website up to date and sending out messages. And all of this, of course, for us adhering to the shifting changes in the governor's guidelines and limits for Virginia. So we managed a lot of challenges. The fall, we had very few cases, but we did have one spike in the spring, and it was really quite an uptick. And out of that, you can see some of the statistics. What does it take for the pandemic team? What does it take to contact trace, to understand the origin of this particular outbreak, which happened to have been attendance at an off-campus party? How do you contact trace all of the individuals? How many hours people are assigned to four-hour shifts on the pandemic team to do all of the internal contact tracing? Those who were quarantined on campus or those who were isolated off-campus in local hotels? Between all of that, the pandemic team, faculty, staff, security, dining services delivered 6,320 meals and administered 643 tests. So that quick response to that outbreak brought us through that safely, and we did not have any other outbreaks for the remainder of the semester after that time. We maintained our very strong partnerships with local health organizations, our daily conversations with the Virginia Department of Health, our ongoing partnership, of course, with Augusta Health, including our help with them in administering the vaccines and in COVID testing, and in many partners that provided, hotels that provided housing for our students who needed to be isolated off-campus in that period of time. We did a lot to continue serving the community. We had to do some creative things on campus, particularly for the performing arts. So a local donor was very generous to put up these beautiful tents behind Rose Terrace, right in the center of campus. Our choir rehearsed there, our theater performances were outdoors, weather permitting, and this summer, if you haven't seen Macbeth, American Shakespeare Center is performing under those tents for the next few weeks on our campus. And in not too long, we will be welcoming, welcoming the Heifetz International Music Institute back to a campus home for the summer, but they'll be throughout Stanton as well, because when we religionally set that up, we could not have accommodated the size of their concerts. So they'll be in First Presbyterian Church and over at the Blackburn Inn, but we're really, really glad to have them back. We continued our commitment to the community all through this period of time. You can see some of the area organizations where we placed executive interns, some of them virtual or hybrid, some of them still in person, so very important service to support our community in this difficult period. In combination with the Y and with the Community Foundation, our students and faculty in the Spencer Center for Civic and Global Engagement participated in the SAW Tutoring Network, which has been very successful support for our local high school students. And finally, at the bottom there, you can see the Legacy Tree Project. Our students, facilitated again by the Spencer Center, helped to plant 2,745 trees in Stanton, one for every child in the city schools. So we're very proud to be able to continue that. So we do see some light at the end of the tunnel. I love this photo. This photo was taken with all the confetti following the white coat graduation ceremony for the physician assistant students during commencement weekend out at Murphy Deming, but everyone at Murphy Deming is vaccinated. Their new classes arrive in June, so they will resume normal schedules. We will resume a normal, as normal as possible in a post-pandemic world, instructional schedule on the residential campus, and we are requiring, although there are two areas of exception, all of our students, residential students, faculty, and staff to be vaccinated before they return for the fall semester. When we do that, we'll be welcoming another sizable residential class. Last fall, we felt fortunate, especially as recruiting had to be shut down right at a critical point of the year, that we had record enrollment last fall. We are ahead of that for our residential enrollment this fall, so I think we're probably going to have the third straight year of record enrollment from the university. So that's a real testimony to everybody involved. And finally, as I mentioned, everybody in our community, as many of us, were deeply affected by the incidents that happened in the summer of 2020 for highlighting for all of us this sense of racial inequity. Our faculty, staff, and students felt this most particularly. So we constitute a Coalition for Racial and Social Justice. We gave them a charge in three areas, to look at our own history and our own current practices, look at the roots of systemic injustice that might still remain at Mary Baldwin, to examine our curriculum. Is our curriculum inclusive enough? And a whole working group to continue to explore our relationship with the local community, which has happened in a series of recommendations that I have just recently received. So you can see all the work that they have done to date. A very committed group of individuals came together to do this. And finally, even though we were dealing with the health and safety of our community and living deeply in the present, as always, Mary Baldwin looked to the future and to our place in post-pandemic higher education. One thing we're especially proud of is that in August, we will be launching our new Doctor of Nursing Practice programs at Murphy Deming. The first two programs that will launch there will be in family practice and acute care. A year from August, we'll be welcoming a cohort of nurse anesthetists to that. So we'll have three tracts of the DNP. We are very blessed to have received a $5 million gift to support the entire startup of that, initial scholarships, and also the translational science research that they will do in their hospital and clinical rotations. We took time to celebrate special milestones. This year was the 25th anniversary of the Cadet Corps of the Virginia Women's Institute for Leadership and the 35th anniversary of the Program for the Exceptionally Gifted. So you can see there that it was a joyous afternoon in April when we dedicated the PEG Residence Hall to honor our previous president, Dr. Cynthia Holden B. Tyson, and she was with us virtually. She was right there on the screen, but you can't see it. So that was a very, very great day. And finally, that's certainly not last or least, we are very pleased to welcome a new interim provost as our chief academic leader, Dr. Tenisha Willingham, who's only been in this community for about a year. She came as the Dean of the College of Education and put her hat in the ring midyear when we had a change in that circumstance. So we thank you for your patience tonight, for this opportunity to give you a brief update. I've never been prouder of the entire Mary Baldwin community, and we've never felt more committed and pleased to be a part of this community. So thank you, and I'm pleased to take any questions you might have. Thank you. Are there any questions by council members?
I'm just curious, what, what do you expect your enrollment to be this coming year?
So last year, we had just short of 2,100 students, so somewhere above that, and our strategic plan goal is 2,500 students by 2025.
How many of those are like day students?
Well, undergrad, first of all, I think you're referring to undergraduate students. So we have about, almost 1,000 residential students. Of that, about 200 of them are commuter students, because we only have just around 800 beds available on our campus. So that's the, that will be the ratio, and that's our threshold. We've always thought that if we attain 1,000 students, we would not attempt to push the residential campus beyond that.
Thank you.
Dr. Fox? If you, if you could think of one thing, excuse me, one thing that you will take out of the pandemic and continue as you go forward with Mary, Mary Baldwin, what, what would that be?
I think on behalf of the whole community, I would have to say the flexibility. I mean, it really opened the benefits of assisted digital instruction for our residential faculty. That's not to say that we wouldn't always value in-person instruction, but to meet our students in that regard. We've been able to hire and retain new employees, particularly, I have two members, new members of my executive staff who do not live in Stanton, who come periodically but who work virtually. The ability for our families, particularly those who have young children at home, who had to be at home out of necessity, to continue to have some flexibility in that work schedule. So I think the best of the hybridity and the best of the supportive resilience is a spirit that I'd like to see carry forward. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Just curious, Dr. Fox, how is, I like men's, men's baseball, that's a new program, I believe, there. How is that going? Is, are there other maybe men's sports that are being thought about, or?
So this was that, we have launched three varsity male, men's teams. The first was soccer, and so they did extremely well in both of their two years. This year, we launched men's basketball, and last year, we had baseball, but the season was canceled. So those are our three fully subscribed teams, and we're very pleased, and they enjoyed very much being able to play in Moxie Stadium. So I only myself got to one of those games, but we're really looking forward to a full team next year. So we're not planning a fourth men's sport for next year, but those, they're doing, these three are doing very well.
Cute.
Any additional questions or comments? Right, President Fox, Liesl, I just want to say thank you for being such a valuable partner to the city of Stanton. Mary Baldwin has always been a part of the family here in Stanton, and Mary Baldwin has always made a point to help lift our city up, and I cannot thank you enough, so. And same to the council. Thank you for all your support. Thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item number four on the work session agenda, and item C on the regular meeting agenda. It's a discussion of cancellation of July 8th, 2021 City Council meeting. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been the practice, as long as I've been here, for about eight years, for council to consider the cancellation of a summer meeting or two, depending upon the, the requirements of the organization. I polled council members a couple of weeks ago concerning summer schedules, and while it wasn't unanimous at the time, there seemed to be a consensus around this July 8th date so that that meeting might be canceled. We've checked with department heads, who have indicated that there's no need for them to bring items before council on that meeting date, and so you have in the agenda package a proposed resolution, which have adopted by council during the regular meeting, would cancel the meeting on July 8th. So we would have two meetings in June as scheduled, a meeting on July 22nd, and two meetings in August, but, but if the resolution is adopted, that July 8th meeting would be canceled.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? All right, hearing none, this will be voted on, the regular meeting, item number C. The next item on your work session agenda is item five, a discussion of ordinance increasing the number of commissioners of the Stanton Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item came to our attention through various channels, including from, I think, a couple of council members, as well as some email communications that we were aware of involving current members of the Board of Directors of the Stanton Redevelopment and Housing Authority. When the authority was established in 1961, it was established with, with a board comprising five seats. And in order for that to be changed, it requires an action of council. And if I recall correctly, and I'll invite Mr. Blair to correct me if it's necessary, you have the discretion to set the number of commissioners anywhere between five and nine, but you, you need to, you know, if you want to make a change, there's an action that's required in order to do that, to establish the number of seats, whether that's seven or eight or nine, and then after you've taken that action, then those seats would be filled as would any other seats on any boards and commissions that exist in the city, and that would be through the nominations committee process that you all are familiar with. So the first step is for council to determine whether it wishes to make a change in the size of the body, which is presently five, and you can go up to nine. And then, and so this is for you to discuss today, and if there's a consensus that arises out of the discussion, we would then put this on your agenda for the first meeting in June for action by city council. And if it was adopted at that time, let's say, well, the, the, there's a draft ordinance in your package that provides for seven, a seven-seat body. And if you were to adopt that ordinance, then subsequent to that, the nominations committee could accept applications for, for those additional seats and take those through the process. If council decided that it wished to have nine, a nine-seat body, it could adopt an ordinance that so provided, and then there would be four seats to be filled by the nominations committee or the, on recommendation of the nominations committee, in addition to whatever vacancies may already exist. So you've got a draft ordinance in the package, as I mentioned, it provides for a seven-seat body, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but what we'd like this evening is to see whether there's a consensus on the part of council to move forward to enlarge the body from the present number of five, and if so, to what number? And then we would schedule that for your consideration at the next meeting.
Right. Are there any questions? Councilor Mead.
Yes, Mr. Rosenberg, I just wanted to make you aware that Mary Sue Kibbegan, who's the chairman of the Board of the Redevelopment and Housing Authority, is here, and she's prepared to address council.
I, I think if the mayor would like to invite her to the podium for her input.
Would you like to provide some information? Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for all the work you've done on this ordinance, Mr. Blair, and thank you all for considering this. I really appreciate it. I'm a new chair to the Housing, Redevelopment Housing Authority, and I want to assure you, this is a very strong organization. So this is not a sign that it's weak, it's a sign that it's too strong for a five-seat board. We have three committees, a finance committee, a personnel committee, and a, and this is new this year, a program and community development committee. And our, our charge is to provide oversight to this nonprofit organization that's funded by the state. What's happening with the five-seat board is that, first of all, everyone is very busy, and they do make it to the meetings. We have two people serving on the personnel committee. It's running great. We have one individual, Allison back here, who is starting up the program and community development, and the idea there is to create partnerships between this housing authority and other similar programs in the city and in the county. And then we have a finance committee, and right now, we have one new commissioner who has said, yes, he will be that committee. I was on it, but because I'm chair, I can't be on it. We really need finance oversight. If there's anything that we need, it's finance oversight. So we need a larger commission. Councilman Claffey and I have talked a lot, and so have Councilman Mead and I. If we had seven, it certainly would be better, but if we could eventually be up to nine with staggering appointments, that would be preferable. And here's why. The housing authority has two major programs, Section Eight vouchers, which are the, which are given to individuals, and then they go to private landlords. The other one is multifamily housing, which is Elizabeth Miller Gardens and Ferrier Court. And the board recently took a tour of those. They're very well-maintained, there is a waiting list. They, the, but a third kind of mini-program under Section Eight is called project-based vouchers. Our goal is to expand affordable housing in this area, but to do it where it makes sense and not get such concentrations. The project-based voucher program provides vouchers, and you've heard from developers who have come in here and said that they were going to propose a project and then apply to the state for funding, they get a certain amount of vouchers. It was very touch and go in February when we had two resignations, three of us there to meet and approve those vouchers. So we need some buffer as well. That's, if you have any questions, I'm happy to ask them.
Councilor Claffey.
How many meetings have you had since you're back to the full strength of five?
We meet every month, so I would say we've had three. So we met this month, May, April, March. We've had three.
Okay. And is that working better with five as, I know you were down?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were, I mean, we just basically were emailing each other, please, 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 what time works? I mean, we would meet any time of the day just to get, get a quorum. And we did change the wording to seat instead of members, because I understand from past work in nonprofits and as well as talking to a chair of a nonprofit, if you use the word seats, then even if you authorize up to nine, whatever we have is considered the full board, they're just empty seats. And so we don't have to worry about quorum. If you say nine members, then the quorum is going to be based on nine members, but if we don't have all nine seats filled, it's a problem. So that was a change we made to the bylaws was the wording. And I have management control masters in nonprofits, so I know what I'm talking about.
Councilor Darby.
Ms. Kibbegan, I heard you say two things, and I just need a little bit of clarification. One, you said that you were, you think you've been at the five, five full members that, you know, I know we approved, the nomination committee approved some new ones here recently, and you think that's been for three meetings?
I believe so. I, I, because we just had our third meeting, Allison, three meetings.
Okay, and then, but I also heard you say that prior to that, the issue was definitely getting a consensus of the members there. And I remember from the nomination committee meeting hearing that that was a problem, that you were down to about, what, two or three people that were showing up?
No, we, we had three people, but if only two showed up, we did not have a quorum. And so five is just really pushing it, because. And so five is just really pushing it, because everyone has a life, and there are times when one person might be late or can't show up. Does that answer your question?
It does, but my, I guess my subsequent question is then, if it's difficult to get five people present, isn't it going to be even more difficult to get seven people's schedules?
No, I'm not talking about getting 100% present, but if we have five people on the board, a quorum is three.
So you still.
So we have no wiggle room.
Okay.
If we have seven people, then the quorum is, Mr. Blair, four?
Four.
Four. So we've got, we have, we have more wiggle room.
And what, what specifically, what's the, what is the real, like, meat and potatoes? What's the need for, other than just having a body there to?
We need some more, we need at least one more person on the finance committee for financial oversight of that organization. They have a lot of money flowing through that organization, and they're well-run, but we really, I'm, I'm not licensed now, but I was a attorney, we need that oversight there. I feel like we aren't doing a full job if we don't do that. That's one reason. Another reason is that we want to expand the capacity of this organization to expand affordable housing. We need, we need bodies, we need people there, we need thinking, strategic planning, that sort of thing. And when you're doing it with just a few people, it's almost like a good old gal club.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Holmes.
Having served on that committee, I know how many meetings we did not have because somebody was out sick. Or, and I mean, at the time, our committee was fairly old, you know, I don't know if that's the case now, but I mean, they were.
You mean age-wise?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the oldest. So we've got younger, younger blood.
One of the younger ones back, back when I was on, but it's really, it was really hard to get a quorum. I mean, I, I would say we probably missed 50% of our meetings because we couldn't get a quorum. Sometimes we would go three or four months without a meeting because everybody couldn't get there.
During COVID, fortunately, that did not happen to us. We did have two meetings in a row canceled. Shannon Harrington was chair, and she and I talked, and we made sure that everyone was reviewing the financials in front of us, even though we couldn't have a meeting. But you're right.
I mean, and it, and it does help to have new people with new ideals, new thoughts, and and everybody could do more research and stuff like that when you have that many more people. And it doesn't, I mean, everybody's volunteering, so it's not like it really cost anything.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilor Dole.
It does make sense to me to have a committee that has more than one person on it. That doesn't sound like a committee. You know, you can't do any brainstorming when it's, well, I guess you could, but, you know, having one person with that responsibility doesn't seem quite right. So I see that as being a really valid reason. And and if you had your, your druthers, you would go for an eventual nine-member board. And because you had another, I think Allison has a committee of one now, two?
Correct.
Yeah, so you've got two committees with just one person on them. So we certainly need affordable housing, and so I I would love to see some additional activities. So I would support if you, if you feel like nine is the workable figure, I'd be in favor of that.
May I say something?
Oh, yes, please.
Councilman Claffey and I talked about this, and I'm the one that would love to see a nine-seat commission eventually, but I'm also very realistic that if we brought four more new people on right now, I think that's just as unwieldy. I would, I have, I'd seen a draft of this, and I know there was a clause in there that authorized seven members. If you took that out, but left it up there where the, where you can say, where it says five to nine members, then you don't have to keep going back through this process. So you can do the ceiling of nine, but you don't have to do up to nine. And and, for example, at the last meeting, someone has already expressed an interest would like to join now. So we've sent them to the website and showed them the application. I know that when they interviewed, they interviewed five people. It's not a lack of interest in our, in our town. I think it's timing. And and you all have seen, there's a very strong volunteerism attitude in Stanton. So that that might be a way to address it, but I'm, I as chair, and I want to speak for Wanda Stevens as executive director, that if we had seven, we won't be meeting in July and August. We usually take off July and August. So if we had two more new members by September, October, that would be great.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilor Dole.
So in other words, if if we had Mr. Blair write some legalese for us that would basically say up to nine members.
Well, it's there.
And then, and then we would, you'd get two, you'd, you'd up it to seven now, get those people on board, and then up, up it to the two more at a later date. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I believe that Mr. Blair has already put that in the draft, because it reflects the state, the state code, haven't you, Mr. Blair?
No, the, I apologize, but the, the draft has seven commissioners.
But there's a first paragraph that says that the council may appoint five to, to nine.
It does, and that's from the state code.
Right.
Well, unfortunately for this, since it's an ordinance, you would need to have the actual number of commissioners in your ordinance. And again, what we, I, I can look at some options if the council would like to have that up to nine and do it by resolution. However, the council does need to take an official action to set it at seven, if if that's what you want. And then, again, whether it's through ordinance or resolution, you would need to come back and increase it to nine, because the council itself sets the number of commissioners.
Whatever's easiest for you guys. We certainly aren't gonna fall on the sword for this.
Councilor Claffey.
We have discussed this matter, and I can see the point where we need to get the number expanded a little bit so that we can have full committees and we can have two-person committees, which makes great sense. But from a nominating committee standpoint, I think it makes more sense to have a staggered term, and and I'd like to see it go to seven in the short run after we get these on board and trained and then running. And then, if the need is to go to nine, let's, let's rediscover it. But I'm willing to compromise on the seven now because I, I see the need. So I, I'd be willing to make a move, a motion that we expand the, the commission to seven at this time, with potential down the road to go to nine.
Madam Mayor, there's not really a need, and and this is instance for a formal motion at this point. I think if, if we can get a sense from each council member that proceeding with an ordinance for seven members, then that's adequate, and we'll put it on your regular meeting agenda for action at the next meeting. And at that time, it would be appropriate for a motion to be made.
So Councilor Claffey's given direction for seven. Vice Mayor Robertson, any comments?
After, after hearing an explanation and knowing that there are committees with one member, I, I can see, but at seven is all that I would go for it now.
Councilor Darby.
I appreciate what Ms. Kibbegan explained, and as far as the reasons that they need the seven. And, you know, if that's, if that's how council wants to proceed, I, I can go along with that. I do, I would have more comfort in knowing, like, if, if they're going to be off in July and August, I would rather get a report back in, let's say, October, what the five people are doing and why seven really is needed, because it seems like to me they just got to where they're fully staffed with the five. And I'm not hearing, other than just, you know, these things. I mean, I get the financial oversight and the one person at a meeting, you know, that's difficult, but I feel like I would still want more information before I would be in agreement with going to seven.
Councilor Mead. Did you have a, a number in mind?
I think whatever provides the authority with the flexibility they need to do what they, what they are commissioned to do, and provides them with the staffing, the personnel, the number of commissioners that they need to govern financials, that they need to provide for a personnel function, that they need to provide for community, community engagement. I think that's the number we should be getting to. And if today, seven is satisfactory, then I don't know why we would second-guess the people who actually do this work for us or for our, for our folks who need housing. So if seven is the number that Ms. Kibbegan feels is appropriate, that would be the number that I support.
No, come on up, Ms. Profeta, because this affects you as well, since you are a member.
And at the risk of sounding like a hair club for men, men ed, I'm not just a member, but I also live in housing. So in terms of the financials, I would say three people should be on that committee. They, they see millions of dollars go through that authority. So even if you have a two-person committee, if one person is out sick, and, and the person who's on the committee now doesn't even really understand what they're doing, we get a presentation from the, the financial person at the housing authority, but for them to really understand what we're looking at and how to expand housing in Stanton safely and affordably, I think at least a three-person committee would do. The committee that I'm on, I came up with a poll for residents of housing. I'm trying to identify gaps in services. We have so many organizations that city council funds, and these organizations, I think, would, would love to hear how housing residents could possibly benefit from their services. So this poll that I've done is not going to go out until probably June or July, and then we're off July and August. So now we're looking at possibly August, I'm sorry, September or October, before we even get results in, and then start to partner with these organizations. And I've had to do that by myself, because the only other person on my committee is on the financials committee, and he really needs to put his attention there. So I think I would love to just see, like, we can have nine, and then we can add people, because what's going to happen is now, on top of everything else we're doing, we're going to have to come back to you in September or October to ask for two more people. Like, why make more work and put obstacles in everybody's way? I think it's a waste of your time as well as ours. So thank you for listening.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Holmes.
Yes, having served on that committee, I, I know they definitely need seven, you know, and, and I agree with Steve, Mr. Claffey, that we'd put seven on now and then wait a year, and that way we would have staggered things. And then if they, and they come back and seven's working fine, we can do it that way. But if, if they need nine, I don't see why we couldn't put nine on there, because it'd be nice to have all those committees with more than one person in them.
Councilor Dole.
Well, I certainly support seven. I, I support nine if the, if the need is there, but I understand if you want to go with seven right now and have them come back. If there's not a way for us to authorize nine and let them fill it as needed, that would be my, my ideal solution, and leave, leave that authority at nine and let them decide when they need to fill the other two positions. They could let, let the clerk or council know when they wanted to hire those, or hire. Yeah, we could, like, we're going to pay people. So they can add the last two. It's just an efficiency thing, I think, but I, certainly I'll go with seven if, if that's.
So I'll support seven as well. Mr. Rosenberg, does that give you direction?
It does. So we'll put, we, we have an ordinance prepared that provides for seven. We will schedule that on your regular meeting agenda for the 10th of June, and I'll have a discussion with Mr. Blair as well to explore what possibility may be available to provide some mechanism so that perhaps there's not a need for formal action to expand from seven to nine. And we'll have that available for council as well on the, on the 10th, for your information.
All right, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
All right. So it's 6 o'clock. We are supposed to have been on break at 5:55, so we are now on break. We will be back at 6:15. Okay, it's 6:15, so we're back into the work session. And the next item is item number six, a discussion of city council procedure memorandum. Mr. Rosenberg, let's give these, a couple of council members a second to get back up it. Where are you guys? All right, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this is on the work session agenda in response to requests from several council members to take a look at some of your procedures. Mr. Blair has reviewed them and collected comments from most, if not all, members of council. We've allotted a generous amount of time on the agenda for the next hour for, for you all to consider these issues, and Mr. Blair is prepared to walk you through them.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks and council. Obviously, have had a chance to review the written materials, and as you're probably aware, there, there's a lot to discuss here. So what I would like to do with your indulgence is to go through these in numerical order. I've, I've kind of, in my notes, I have them and each counselor's comment as we go chronologically in order. I did want the council to know, the mayor did speak to me. I think, obviously, there is a lot of attention about the proposed memorandum number 18, which is the electronic citizen participation, and that she would like to discuss that and perhaps incorporate that when we get to number four. And so that would provide, again, depending on how the conversation goes, that should provide time so that knowing that number 18 is, again, about citizen participation electronically, and number four does address just, in general, citizen participation in the meetings, that's, I, I would probably, unless somebody has an objection, discuss number 18 when we get to number four. As you know, there were also some ordinances that I had, again, looking at your procedure. And, and again, I've looked at some of the meetings online, but also just, there's a state code aspect. I would like to discuss just very quickly three of those ordinances. One of the ordinances relates directly to memorandum six, but three of these ordinances, the first is a new, the first is simply a new ordinance that says there are procedural memorandum, which we are discussing, and that these will be discussed every two years. And the reason I'm proposing that as an ordinance is simply because it's transparent. Knowing that government can seem sometimes like a labyrinth, that people feel like they're lost in a maze, I think having that as part of the city code, at least if somebody were online and looking at the city code, trying to figure out, well, how does the council set its rules, there would be an ordinance that says there are memorandum of procedure. So that's all the draft of proposed section 2.10.095 states is that you do have procedures, and you will review them at least once every two years, these council memorandum. And so I don't know if there are any questions about that, but I'm happy to take any if there are.
Any questions?
Okay. Oh.
Councilor Mead.
Yes, Mr. Blair, I don't see anything addressed in this ordinance, your proposed ordinance, about, about changing procedures in between organizational meetings?
Right, and, and well, the, the wording says at least once every two years. And so at least once means you would have discretion between the meetings to.
So that means that at any point in time, at any given meeting,
Right.
that a majority of council could simply vote to change one of those procedures and then go back to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it does state, it also is there so that at your organizational meeting, every two years, there is at least a, a review by everyone on council to make sure these are the procedures you want to, to use going forward for your two-year term, for the two years. years of that council session, I should say.
For the two years unless somebody wants to change something.
Right. The second, uh, ordinance that I just want to bring your attention to and see if there were any comments was, uh, what you discussed earlier in the work session. And it's a proposed amendment to section 2.10.070, and it simply states the council may, by a majority vote, cancel a regular meeting, provided that the council conducts at least one regular meeting each month in a calendar year. And that's just again, to ensure your ordinance matches up with your procedure. And it just states, just if you need to cancel a meeting, you may cancel a meeting by a majority vote. Are there any questions on that?
Councillor Holmes.
If we had Zoom, we wouldn't have to worry about weather because usually the mayor.
Right.
Wouldn't have bad weather, so we could still have a Zoom.
Well, um, that's a great question and that, we will address that in the proposed meetings policy, but just to give you a, an answer right now, um, actually what, where this gets confusing is again, right now, under the state of emergency, the, uh, Freedom of Information Act allows for a Zoom meeting. If you, that's going to end. And so to your point, Councillor Holmes, now if there was a declaration of emergency about the weather, let's say there was a flood or, uh, you know, I'm trying, a tornado, God forbid, or a hurricane.
Ratio.
Right. You might have a declaration of emergency and not, and then you could convene via Zoom. Now, what I would say why that's still important, typically in a snow event, for instance, um, there would not be a declaration of emergency, but it still may be if there are six or eight inches of snow on the ground, it may be that you all say in the mayor, to the mayor, look, we, I'm not going to be there, so if there can't be a quorum, she may cancel the meeting. But again, there probably wouldn't be a declaration of emergency, which would allow you to do the Zoom meeting for.
Seems like since we're already set up, you know, that would.
Right.
Easy go-to.
I, I wish that, I wish that were the case, but again, that's kind of controlled by state law, which requires that declaration of emergency before you can do the electronic.
You couldn't do it otherwise, you'd have to have it.
Right. You'd have to have at least a physical quorum. The third, uh, ordinance amendment, before we get to the policies, is, uh, the quorum section. And this, this may seem a little odd and, and again, I doubt this will ever be used, but we do need our ordinance to match the state law. And I will give you an, an example. This, the language here simply states that if a majority of councillors were conflicted out due to the Conflict of Interest Act, um, the remaining councillors constitute a quorum and can conduct business. Now, this came out of a case out of, I believe it was Front Royal, where there was Walmart coming in. A majority of council was conflicted out and the state law really didn't provide for that at the time. And so there was a code amendment that the state enacted that said, if a majority of folks on any governing body are conflicted out, the remainder forms a quorum and can conduct business. Just, here's a historical anecdote, uh, believe it or not, the Charlottesville downtown mall, uh, the Charlottesville City Council was five members. That mall was created on a two-zero vote because three members had a conflict. So I believe it's 1976, it was a two-o vote that created the Charlottesville downtown mall, city council. But that, again, the code amendment just is to, in, match the local code to the state code, that in case there ever were four of you conflicted out of one matter, four, five, the remainder could in fact still take up that item of business.
What's a conflict? I mean, I mean, do you decide what would be a conflict for one of us or?
No, um, the Conflict of Interest Act defines that. Typically you would come to the city attorney and then if there were other questions, the city attorney for, uh, for your protection may refer you to the Commonwealth's attorney. The Commonwealth's attorney, under the Conflict of Interest Act, has the ability to issue an opinion, which in colloquial terms is a get out of jail free card. Um, if you disclose all your facts about a potential conflict and the Commonwealth's attorney determines there's not a conflict and gives you a written opinion, you can't be prosecuted at that point.
And when I first got on council, I owned some, uh, FOMO Jackson then.
Right.
I had to set out a meeting, or not, I just participated in a meeting because I owned shares and, and I since sold everything so I wouldn't be in that position again. But, but I, I know that that happened with me and I, I'm sure that that's, uh, could happen to any of us.
Right, right. I mean, uh, just to your point, if a majority of council at that time had owned shares in the hotel and there was a matter before council for the hotel, this code provision would allow the remainder of council to still take up that business.
Any additional questions?
So let's turn to the council procedure memorandum. And again, we'll go in chronological order. Uh, the first was council memorandum number two. Uh, the change that I had proposed, and I did speak with, uh, Councillor Mead, uh, she had brought this to my attention and I confirmed with the interim clerk, uh, the Community Resource Bank no longer exists. And therefore that's still part of council procedure memorandum two. So that's proposed to be deleted, that section of the policy, since that particular asset no longer exists. Then I want to get to, uh, there were three separate councillors that had three separate proposals to amend. Memo number two. Councillor Mead, uh, you wanted to add the following sections to the procedure. And I, they're listed in the memo. The first one says, "All council members will disclose any personal or financial relationship a council member has with a prospective appointee to a board or commission." The second, uh, aspect of your amendment says, "All board or commission applicants will be contacted by the clerk of council to acknowledge receipt of their applications." And the third states, "The nominations committee will select a council liaison to communicate with all chairs of city boards and commissions to ensure that each board or commission's needs are being met." And I'll, I'll turn the floor, on, on all of these, I'll turn the floor over to the councillor that proposed this, if they want to say something beyond just the text.
I just wanted to add that, that on item A about disclosures, that that's, I think, a good practice for transparency and that, uh, and that we might amend that to say, "We'll not disclose, um, any relationship, uh, familial, personal or financial, uh, including but not limited to," something like that. And I, again, I think it's a good practice for transparency. It would not be legally required, uh, but I think, uh, I think, uh, if we just stick with a legal standard and go with the minimum, that we're not, uh, we're really not, uh, providing enough transparency. And that's, and on item C, I think this is our practice on many committees, but it's, I don't think it's, uh, enumerated in this memorandum, and that's why I wanted to add it.
And I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to the council to discuss whether you'd like me to add that in when this comes back before you or not.
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Claffey.
As far as C goes, I would think what happened tonight is a perfect example of how it should work. We have someone from the actual board who discovers a, uh, a need to, uh, adjust their board or their commission, et cetera. And they approach a member of council and, and state the need and we discuss it as a council and do exactly what we did tonight. And I think that would cover it without having to create another council liaison to communicate to all chairs at all city boards and commissions to ensure that each board and commission's needs are being met. We're going to assume that it's being met. If it's not being met, then we're going to ask that board and commission to come to us and say, "It's not being met," and then we proceed.
I just want to clarify that, uh, for instance, I am council liaison to the redevelopment and housing authority. And so they came to me first with this request and I passed it on to the city attorney and to the city manager and to Mr. Claffey. And, and that's my intent there, that we not have a council liaison separate that would communicate with all chairs. I mean, for a council liaison to each board and commission that would ensure that the board or commission's needs are being met by, by providing that communication that I provided with the redevelopment and housing authority. It's not worded correctly.
So you would like to change perhaps all to each chair? And have a council liaison to communicate with each chair? I, I see what you're saying.
We now have liaisons to each board and commission.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify that it should be the responsibility of that, that liaison.
Okay.
To communicate the needs of the committee or authority.
All right.
Through the appropriate members of city council or staff.
And that changes things. Yeah, that makes much more sense.
Okay.
Councillor Holmes.
Some, some committees don't have liaison, so I guess then it would fall back to whoever's the chair.
So that's a good question. If, if a board does, or commission does not have a council liaison, what is the communication you'd want as a council to that board?
I would think what Terry said, that, that, that individual chair of that committee would then come like, like, you know, it happened tonight. You know, Ms. Kibbigan came and personally gave her reasons. I mean, that's, that would suit fine, uh, if there was not a liaison specifically stated for that particular committee, have the chair come in.
Or bring it to any council member.
Long as it's clear.
Sure. I will.
We're looking for that avenue of communication.
Okay. I will make that, I will reword that so that it's clear that each council liaison, it's their responsibility to ensure, to talk with the chair and ensure that the board and commission's needs are being.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? A, concerning the disclose in any personal or financial relationship a council member has with a prospective appointee to a board or commission? Well, it's my opinion that we are already, um, doing that. We're already practicing any disclosure, uh, just like Councillor Holmes, um, stated that he disclosed that he had stock.
Well, see, nobody would have known if I hadn't gone.
Yeah, but.
Mr. Quinn and asking.
I don't know that that's ever been an issue with this council though. So I don't know that that's necessary because it is my belief that's already being practiced.
So you, you believe that personal relationships that members of council have are disclosed and with any prospective appointee? Is that your understanding?
Um, it's my understanding.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
I, I, I believe that this is, um, it's not necessary. I believe that if there is a conflict of interest of any sort, it, it is already being practiced. So I'm not in favor of A.
This is Carolyn Dole. I'm not sure that's a conflict of interest. That's just a, uh, uh, information. Uh, if you're friends with somebody, that's not a conflict of interest because there's no financial, um, benefit going on.
And we, everybody seems to know everyone in Stanton.
And I, and I, and I agree. I mean, I, I trust each council member, uh, you know, that we were elected by the citizens of, of Stanton, they vetted us and they elected us. And I, I believe that, uh, like I said, if, if you've got a conflict of interest, you speak it up and you say so. You know, do you have to go say, okay, I'm friends with, uh, this lady or this gentleman? The only thing that I could see would be different, excuse me for interrupting, but, just you might not know you have a conflict. I mean, I, I, I knew to ask, but some people might not know to ask.
But that's not what A is saying. A is saying, "We'll disclose any personal or financial relationship." So I don't see the point of it either.
This is, this is Carolyn Dole. This is specific to the, the nom, uh, people being appointed to boards or commissions, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so state law covers, um, our, our decision-making, um, in terms of conflict of interest already. This is just a, a council memorandum saying for, as an operating procedure, that if you're friends or you're second cousins with somebody who, who's going to be recommended for nomination, that you disclose that. Is that correct, Ms. Mead?
Yes, that, that is correct. And it, so it, so a conflict of interest with a capital C, capital I, is not what I'm talking about here. This takes it a step further so that folks in the community are aware of personal relationships and financial relationships between not, and I'm not talking about capital C, capital I. I'm talking about those personal relationships, which might ultimately affect the, uh, the, the influence, for instance, that a member of city council or members of city council might have on the decisions of a commission or a board. I believe it's important, uh, for transparency to disclose those relationships.
I believe we've had transparency for years gone by and this has not been an issue. Uh, and I believe it is being practiced and everyone seems to know everyone in Stanton. So I believe the nominating committee will never get any work done. So I'm not in favor of, um, item A.
This is not limited to the, the nominating committee. This is limited, this says, "All council members, we all vote on nominations to boards and commissions." So I'm not saying that we should not nominate someone or should not put somebody on a board or a commission because they have a personal or financial relationship. But if there is one, I believe that it, for the, for, to be transparent to our citizens, that that be established.
Well, that makes it even more broad and then the council will never get any work done. I'm, I'm still not in favor of A.
It's a simple statement.
I'm still not in favor of A. It, that has not been an issue in the past.
I, I can see, I agree with B. I mean, I.
Yeah.
I agree with B.
Yeah, absolutely.
Be included in with, uh, number two, where it says, "Applications will be filed with and maintained in the clerk of council's office." And it, uh, the clerk of council will acknowledge receipt of their application. Can we just add it onto that?
Yes, that, that's what I would do if, if it's the council's, uh.
Yeah.
That one makes total sense. So that everyone knows that their application has been received.
What about C?
I think we've got C covered, but we, I don't think it's necessary to do this. We, we're just going to state that one of the jobs of the council liaisons would be to, uh, inform city council if their board or commission needs to be expanded.
And if there's, and it, and if there's no liaison, then that committee chair will, will come.
Contact a member of.
Yeah, contact a member and come and explain any, uh, things they may need.
And that clarifies the role of a council liaison, because that's nowhere to find.
Correct. Okay.
All right. I'm in agreement.
This is Carolyn Dole. So I, I have a question. Are we going by, um, suggestions that council, councillor Mead made till we go through all the memos and then we're going to come back to somebody else or, 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 because I have, I had a request on, uh, number two as well.
Hey, Councillor Dole, this is John Blair. And yes, uh, you're correct. We're going through these chronologically. So, uh, next, what I would like to do, councillor Mead made a suggestion. You made a, a similar suggestion and Mayor Oaks also brought up the same point concerning this. So, uh, my, my plan is to the next address. So my, my plan is to next address that and then I will get to, Councilor Doll, you had a couple of separate suggestions about this memorandum as well.
Okay, because I only have one on, on number two.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I'm sorry, what I, I guess the way to handle this with your suggestion, Ms. Mead and Mayor Oaks, all three of you mentioned that on council procedure memorandum number two, it says, "A report from the nominations committee will be sent to council with the agenda materials prior to the council meeting." And all three of you in conversations with me when you were presenting your proposed amendments said that that perhaps has not been the practice recently. Both this council and previous councils, that may not have been the practice. And so, Councilor Doll, you proposed specifically that a report from the nominations committee will be included in the agenda materials distributed by the clerk of council to council members on the Friday preceding the scheduled council meeting. And it is my understanding that the nominations committee may have already talked about this and with the interim clerk had, would like to get to, again, providing this information before council meetings. And, and I'd leave it up to the nominations committee if you, or the interim clerk, if you want to talk about any of those conversations.
Go ahead.
Okay. We did discuss that. We have prepared and are going to prepare it our, our next meeting, which is June 1st. We are going to have a report to go to counselors. And as Mr. Blair knows, the report is actually confidential, so it will not go out at the, with the packet as published online. It will go out separately to council via email.
Well, this is, this is Carolyn Doll. That's fine. I was wanting to get the information at the same time. It doesn't have to be in the same packet. But also, I'm interested in seeing, just like we do with our regular meetings, of seeing the nominations committee, you know, the reports should include their agenda and any applications that have been submitted so that we, just like we would see agenda briefings and that kind of thing for council meetings. And so that would give us something to actually review before we had to vote on people.
Any comments from the nominating committee or anyone on council?
Well, let me ask John Blair a question here on that. Since it's a personnel application form and therefore it's considered confidential, do we want to release that? We can't put it out with the agenda like we just said, or it's been voted upon.
Well, as, as the interim clerk stated, what would happen is that would go out separately from the agenda packet as protected under FOIA as personnel information.
Exactly. So Carolyn, I think that's the distinction that we're, we're coming up with. Is that clear to you that we can't let everybody's name out there in public?
It's clear to me that you can email me the, the agenda and the nominations with the recommendations, so I have all that and sending it on the city email is secure.
All right, so that's strictly the recommend, the recommendations and not all candidates.
No, I want, I want to see every, everybody's application and the agenda along with the recommendation.
Then that defeats the purpose of the nominating committee.
Right. So me, if that's
Well, I'm not, I'm not interviewing them. That's the whole, that's the purpose of the nominations committee.
Right.
But purpose of the nominations committee is to review the information.
And make recommendations.
Selection and then we vote on that.
What, what harm is it? We're going to have a full-time clerk of council who will have plenty of time to send us what she's making up for the nominations committee. So it's already there electronically. She just sends it out to those of us who aren't on the committee, along with your recommendation report. It's like a five-minute process.
Councilor Darby.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks. Councilwoman Doll, I just have a question. Since you, you served on the nomination committee for a long time, how did you all do it?
I was not the chair of the nominations committee, but I do know that OFI had the clerk send out a report on the recommendations. But I think it's more useful to have all the information before we vote.
Would all the names, excuse me, Mayor Terry Holmes, would, would it just be okay to just have all the names of the people who applied, but not necessarily all their information? Would that, would that help you at all, Carolyn?
It, it would be just as easy for the clerk to send the applications and the agenda and the recommendation, because that's the report. And, and then everybody's got everything. You can never read it if you don't want to. I'd be interested in seeing it.
What's the council's pleasure?
I'm, I'm in favor of sending, you know, the information to, you know, out that the council, the committee met. We discussed the applicants. We picked these applicants to go forward and we send that out to all council members so that they have a chance to review who the committee appointed. And then, then the, the individual council members can look at that and look at their material and say, I'm in favor of this. I'm not in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of just sending everything. Because it's a little bit of, I, I see it as a little bit of a breach of, no, not personnel, but just a breach of their personal information.
Councilor Mead.
Yeah, just as a point of fact, any city council member can request copies of the applications and resumes of any of the folks who have applied for boards and commissions. So I guess that would be just up to us then, going forward, to request all of those whenever we were interested in seeing them.
Okay.
This is Carolyn Doll. And yes, that's, that's my understanding. I have a right to see that and it's not any kind of infringement on anybody's information because it's on a secure email. So if I have to do it separately, then that'll just be more work for the clerk for no good reason.
So is it the desire of the council to have it set up to where the nominations committee sends a report that's attached separately, excuse me, that is separately sent to the council members through a secured confidential email with the nominations report? And if a member of council would like to receive a copy of the different applications, they can request it from the clerk of council.
Well, this is Carolyn Doll and, and I will just submit a request as soon as she gets here, saying I always want all the information, including the agenda, whatever the nominations committee gets. So she'll have to always do that separately. And I was just thinking that it would be more efficient if she could send it all out at one time.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Darby.
Councilwoman Doll, did you make that a practice when you were on the nominating committee before? Did you set
I was not the chair, but no one ever requested it. If they had, I would have happily sent it to them.
But you didn't request it from the clerk before, did you?
I was on the nominations committee. I had the information.
I think
If I hadn't been on it, I would have requested it.
Did others? I mean, I'm just curious. Did other council members do that?
No one ever, no one requested it.
Why, why then? I mean, I reckon in my question, why now? I mean, why is it all of a sudden becoming that we've got to know this?
Because I don't know the people and it's helpful for me to see the applications. I have a right to see them and so why not just include it in the memorandum that it goes out with your recommendations the same Friday that the agenda briefing goes out? I mean, what's, what harm is there?
No big deal.
I think, Councilor Darby, and I don't mean to speak for you, but are you asking if this was a practice in the past where it automatically, all the applications and names went out with a report in the past?
Yeah, I, I mean, I get that there was a report. Carolyn already clarified that, that OFI used to do that. But I was just curious as to if council members, yourself, Terry, Brenda said she did, requested all of the, you know, applicant information in the past? If that was something that was a practice that other council members had done previously?
And my answer again is the same. If they had asked for it, we surely would have given it to them.
Councilor Mead.
The purpose of this exercise is to amend council procedure memorandum. So, you know, I can appreciate what has been done in the past. I guess that has some relevance, but we are here to make amendments to the procedure memorandum. And Carolyn is simply suggesting an amendment.
Is it the will of the council to make the amendment?
No problem.
Do you want to go with it?
Let's do it.
Information anyway, so.
No problem.
Okay, Carolyn, we're going to keep it in. Your, your request, that is.
Okay.
So, Mr. Blair, if you can add that change, we would appreciate it.
All right. Next up is council procedure memo number three. And the one change that I am proposing, the city manager had spoken to me about just making it clear that when a counselor wants to put something on the agenda, that it will be placed on the following meeting's work session agenda, which is common practice, is my understanding, that when a counselor says, "I'd like to see something on the agenda," the next meeting, it's on the work session agenda for council to discuss.
That, that isn't exactly the practice.
Okay.
It may be on the next meeting's work session agenda if the agenda is not
It's not full.
Too full. So I think there should be some qualifier in that statement that says that pending the size of the work session agenda and the constraints of time, that the city manager would, at his discretion, put it on that agenda or a, an upcoming agenda.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. All right. Make that change.
Everybody in agreement?
Not sure.
Then also on council procedure memorandum number three, Mayor Oaks had proposed the following. She'd like to amend the second sentence and third paragraph to read, "Such an invocation or moment of silence will be on a rotating basis, with each council member electing which to observe and whether to defer to the next council member in the rotation or another council member." And just like I've done with Ms. Mead and Ms. Doll, Mayor Oaks, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Well, we had a situation where a council member wanted to do the invocation and the, that particular council member was not listed to conduct the invocation for that particular meeting. The council member that was listed was willing to yield that council member's time to the counselor that wanted to proceed with the invocation. And with the way the procedure memorandum was written, that was not allowed. So this just gives more flexibility. Councilor Mead.
So when it, so you, what you're suggesting is that at any given time, a council member can allow another council member, the immediately preceding council member in the rotation, or two or three council members forward to, in the rotation, and that, that person would substitute and do the prayer or moment of silence. And then how do you go back to, I mean, do you then go back to the rotation with the person alphabetically?
Yeah. You would just go back into the rotation. So if, like tonight, I have the invocation, but if Councilor Holmes really wanted to do it and he was not next up in the rotation, this would allow me the opportunity to say, "Councilor Holmes, this is special to you. You want to have the invocation for tonight? You can do it and I'll yield the floor to you." And then for the next meeting, we would just go back like we normally would. Whoever's supposed to do it, right.
So that, would that be you or the person after you?
No, it would be, I've given up my turn. So, so it would be the next person in line as far as the alphabetical order arrangement.
Be the council member after, after
It would not, it would not mess with the rotation. No.
One person relentlessly saying they're right for that meeting. So it wouldn't disturb any of the other
Correct.
Right. Sounds reasonable.
I'm good with that.
So who keeps track of that?
The clerk of council.
It's by the
So I, I just need to get clarification. So, so if Mayor Oaks decides she doesn't want to do the prayer tonight, but Mark Robertson does, then he'll just do it. And then she loses her turn and then he gets to do it again. That's what you're saying.
It would be whoever's up next in the rotation. So if it's Councilor Holmes that is up next, then he would do it and we would just follow the rotation once again. I can't imagine that this is going to happen very often, but at least it gives us an option.
I, I just wasn't aware that there were some meetings that were more exciting to do, do the prayer than another, but okay.
I, I could see if maybe something happened in a particular week or, or period before meeting, maybe somebody had something they really wanted to say. Maybe it's about somebody in the town that just passed or, or something like that. I could see this, so I don't, I don't really see a problem with this.
Good. I don't either.
Okay. Mr. Blair, if you can make the proper adjustments?
Will do. All right, now we get to memo number four. And again, at the mayor's request, she wanted to also discuss eighteen, the proposed eighteen, because that may go into number four. What I want to point out, the changes that I'm proposing in number four are a couple in terms of, the way this was worded, it sounded like a land use applicant was part of a public hearing. And the reason I feel that it's important to clarify this is the following. As we saw last, at the last council meeting, counselors sometimes have a lot of questions for an applicant. But I think to, to be clear and to be fair, if that is how you want to proceed going forward, to have the ability to ask the applicant questions, it needs to be clearly stated in your procedure that they're not part of the public hearing. Because the public hearing, when everybody else gets up to speak in favor or against who's not the applicant, you don't question them and there's nothing in your procedure to question them. And also, it's important to note that this procedure already did have the ability for the applicant to rebut or respond to anything that was said during the public hearing. So I think it's just important to clarify that an applicant in a land use application or before council is not part of the public hearing. You hear the presentation from staff, you let the applicant present something, and then you have, the mayor opens the public hearing, listens to the public, closes the public hearing, and then the applicant can address any address anything said during the public hearing and any questions council can have. This, this just clarifies that, that the applicant is not part of the public here. The other change there is, and this will get into Vice Mayor Robertson, you had some proposals here, is your procedures actually don't have anything that says there is a matters from the public. Now that, you don't have to, but I think it's good to clarify that there is a matters from the public at each regular council meeting. And again, that actually was not in the procedures. So this clarifies that there is that, that portion of your meeting. And also April eighth, you did adopt introductory remarks for the mayor to make before them, before the matters from the public, and this states that those are read. Those were the changes that I had, again, were to clarify that applicants are not part of a public hearing. And also that there is a portion of your meeting called matters from the public. As this, this was titled speakers appearing before council during regular meetings and public hearings. And again, there was no mention of matters from the public in this policy.
Are there any questions? Counselor Mead.
So at the conclusion of the applicant's rebuttal, council may ask applicant or staff members any questions. Does the public then get an opportunity to offer their thoughts again?
Not, not as it's currently written.
Okay.
And again, I, I can only state places I've worked in the past, that does not occur.
Okay. And then you also, on line forty-two, it says, a majority of council may waive any of the limits set for the speakers or the applicant.
Right.
So the council, council may waive limits set for the, the public who may speak.
Correct. If, if, if somebody were up here and, and you felt like they weren't able to finish their remarks in the time limit and, and a majority said, I want to allow that speaker to finish, they could vote to waive the time limit. But it is important, again, and, and this gets into First Amendment law, that everybody gets the same amount of time to start. Now, if somebody can't complete their remarks and you feel that as a council, you'd like to let them complete their remarks, you need to state that on the record.
Counselor.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Carolyn, go ahead.
Just looking at the applicant in a, in a public hearing, it seems to me the best practice would be to have staff, you know, find out if they're coming, invite them or whatever, let them be part of the staff briefing. If we do have questions for the applicant at that point, and then conduct the public hearing just for the public.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Counselor Holmes.
I think we should keep the same amount of time we allot now for in-person matters from the public because, all right, five minutes, five minutes is a good amount of time, you know? If we lower it to three, I could see somebody having a, a reason not to have enough time to speak. Because for me, sometimes I stutter a little bit when I first start out before I get my thoughts together. And, but I think we should have the same rules for somebody calling in from away as we have inside. I don't think there should be any difference. And if, and if we have, if it gets down to that, we just can alternate between whoever's here and whoever's on, on, on the phone. I don't think we should change any of those things.
Well, well, I, I, we can get into that. That, that was part of Vice Mayor Robertson's proposals or it proposed amendments, one of which was to decrease the amount of time for each speaker from five minutes to three minutes. And Vice Mayor Robertson, you also had a, a proposal to limit the matters from the public portion of the meeting to ten speakers, five of which would be in person and five of which would be through Zoom or electronic communications means. Again, just as I've done with the other counselors, I'll let you speak to that.
And every, have her talking some, I mean, yeah, I did suggest three minutes because I think it's a good, a good limit. We did had our assistant city manager go ahead and do a little bit of talking to different city councils, different areas, different governments. And three minutes is kind of a timeline that all these different ones are, are at. I think anybody can make what, what they need to be said in three minutes. It also will give more of a time for, more of a chance of speakers to talk. The other thing that I said, and I said, public, you know, maybe keeping it to ten. We've talked a little bit, you know, one on, or two on two, or whatever, or one on one. And maybe I've come up to, to even change that to say that there will be a certain amount of time that we're going to cut, possibly cut things off at nine o'clock or nine fifteen, whatever the case. And that would, depending, if we end up matters, if we end up our business of the city at eight thirty or at eight forty-five, then there would be a half hour to talk from, from matters of the public. And then that would give later on, like I said, a chance for us to respond, which is different than it's ever been done. But I think that that is very important that that be done. So it could be, it could end up being ten. I'm in full support of being able for people to call in. I think that there's nothing wrong with that. I think they need to have that ability to call in and express their opinions. But I think there needs to be a, a certain time limit on things that we can, that we can hold to get, to get the business of the city done. And also a, a matter of time that we don't, we're not here until ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night. Because we need to be able to get to, if you work the next day, there are members of the public that need to work the next day. We're not, don't want to keep people here until all hours of the night. I think it's very important that city council members, if something is blatantly said false, that we need to have the ability to correct that. Case in point, back earlier after January the sixth, there was many, many speakers that came out and insisted that the four of us went up to DC and it was said over and over. And we had to sit here and smile. It's the old democratic adage, if you say something loud enough and you say something often enough, it becomes fact if you don't correct it. So I'm simply saying, if, if somebody says something that's false that Terry doesn't like, Terry can have two minutes to correct them, to correct the matter. If I don't hear anything that, that, that I don't disagree with, I'll keep my mouth shut. Spicy, same thing with Steve. Or if Ms. Doll has something to say, that she didn't like something that, that somebody said. I think, you know, that has that ability to say that. So those are the main talking points. I think we need to have the ability to correct the record if something is said that's blatantly false. I think we need to put up a three minute time limit because most of the city governments and town and county governments in this area are doing it. I believe Charlottesville does that as well. Am I correct?
They, they do have a three minute time limit.
Three minute time limits.
They, actually, they allow the counselors while the public comment is going on, they have back and forths with the speakers.
And I'm not suggesting that.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Counselor Holmes wanted to speak next, but I did want to interject. We have like three minutes left. Should we first determine whether or not the remote participation is something that we're interested in pursuing? Whether it be call in or Zoom before we get too far in the weeds? But Counselor Holmes, I know you wanted to say something.
Just one thing, we, we are elected to listen to the people of this city. And I don't think we should restrict the amount of time, I mean, taking it down to three minutes or restricting it to the number of people. Because if we'd have done that, when we had the Second Amendment thing, we had a line out around the door and they were, and they were people here and, and we were here until eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I don't want, I don't want any restrictions. I think it should stay the way it is. I don't really like the idea of a rebuttal because then I think it just causes more, we're here to listen to them. It causes more animosity. And I've had people here threaten me not to shop in my business.
Yeah, I understand that, Terry.
So, and I mean, I had, I listened to it. That's, that's why we were elected. We're elected to listen to the people in this room of this city.
We are elected to listen and I, and I, thank you. We're elected to listen and I fully intend on listening. But I also believe that if somebody says something blatantly false that is nothing more than an outright lie, we need to be able to correct it.
This is Carolyn Doll. I am totally opposed to limiting the number of speakers, to limiting the amount of time we're going to listen to them. I'm totally opposed to the rebuttal. That just turns us into an uncivilized, you know, I can just only imagine what that would be like. We don't need that. We might need another memorandum on a, on how to behave professionally for counselors. I'm not sure. But we certainly don't, don't, I don't want to restrict in any way the time, the number, the time limits. And I don't favor a rebuttal at all. That's just asking for trouble.
Okay. As far as the time is concerned.
I disagree.
Mr. Blair, as far as proceeding forward, before we get into the weeds on time limits or rebuttals, should we at least consider whether or not the remote participation is of interest?
Yes. For number eighteen and, and this, what number eighteen really does is it makes it your policy that during a public hearing and matters from the public, the mayor will ask the city manager to determine if anyone is on Zoom and would like to speak either at the public hearing or matters from the public. This also talks about the member, any citizen participant adheres to the same rules as in-person participants at a public hearing or matters from the public. And it also talks about if there are members on, if there are citizens on Zoom or residents on Zoom that would like to speak, the mayor will alternate between an in-person speaker and somebody on the Zoom platform. That's what council procedure number eighteen talks about. It really is to allow for the use of Zoom for participation in your meetings, in the public hearing and matters from the public section of the meeting.
Right. Are there any thoughts from Counselor Mead?
Yeah, we talked about this earlier, Mr. Blair. The, the addition of, or, or not to need to add town hall meetings to this list of meetings at this point.
Right.
Because it is not currently a type of meeting. And that we would have to change another council procedure memorandum to add town hall meetings. So that would be, what I would anticipate is that the electronic citizen participation should be allowed in public hearings and matters from the public. And when we adopt the memorandum to include town hall meetings and special meetings, that, that it would also refer to them.
Town hall meetings, Counselor Mead?
Yes.
And again, that's a different procedure memorandum. That's a proposed procedure memorandum, number seventeen, I believe. Counselor Mead would like to add, and, and on, again, you have to keep in mind, number seventeen doesn't exist right now. That was a suggestion I had because quite frankly, most councils have a meeting policy, number one. And right now, your meetings, how they're called and things like that are distributed throughout the code and the charter and the state code. So when we got to that, Counselor Mead has a proposal. She'd like to add town hall meetings to number seventeen as well, which would be one or two counselors being able to use a city facility to have citizens come in and speak on a particular topic or discuss a particular topic. But again, that's, that's for number seventeen.
Okay.
So the. As eighteen is written, it would be considered a special meeting? Is that correct?
As eighteen is written, it would apply to special meetings as well.
And town hall.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that's clear.
So the request, Counselor Mead, is to add the town hall meetings to.
That's for procedure memorandum number seventeen.
Yeah.
This is Carolyn Doll. I'm in favor of eighteen.
As am I.
Right. What about the rest of the council? Counselor Holmes?
Say it in the microphone.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm in favor of eighteen also.
Oh, ma.
Okay.
Yeah, I am.
All right. I'm in agreement as well. So at this time, I need to go ahead and call this work session adjourned. So, Mr. Rosenberg, can we continue the discussion concerning the council procedure memorandum at the next meeting? To have it on the work session?
We'll, we'll include it on the work session for your first meeting in June to can, to, to pick up where you've left off.
Okay. And Mr. Blair, you have council procedure memorandum number eighteen in place and ready to add?
Yes.
As well. Okay. All right. So with that, this meeting is now adjourned. The regular meeting will begin at seven thirty.